Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Sawyer, and tonight I'll be serving as the Chair. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 6, 2023. We will hear the cases as they actually, we may not. We may not hear it in the order they are on the agenda. And let me start by saying if anyone is here for Agenda Item 5.1, Zone Case 2280-B, that has been withdrawn from tonight's meeting. So if anyone is here for Item 5.1, I hopefully just saved you a lot of time. We'll see. So next, first matter of business is the citizen's comment. We had several people sign up. First, we had Mr. Charles Bolton, representing Bolton Oil Company. Mr. Bolton, you want to come up? That's true. Mr. Bolton, you do have an item on the agenda tonight.
Yes, sir.
And you can either, you have three minutes to speak in your citizen's comment. You can either do it now, or you can wait until they present your zone case, and you can speak then.
Okay, I'd sooner wait. I may not need to speak once they get through.
Exactly.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on. Next, we have Travis Lanning, representing...
3TML.
That, that, that's it?
I'll speak during the presentation for our...
You want to do the zone case as well? Okay. Okay. Next, we have Mr. Ballinger, Barry Ballinger with Plains Capital Bank, here to speak on behalf of 1139-C.
I'll wait.
You want to wait? Okay. And then we have Mr. Ainsworth, same case.
I'll wait.
You'll wait? Okay, great. Well, that's it for citizen's comment. Yeah, we're moving right along. Next matter of business, the approval of the minutes for March 2, 2023 meeting, and we will need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Bell, second, Ms. Tomlinson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and well, now we will move on to the consent agenda, and we'll need a motion for consent agenda as well.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Noble.
Second.
Second, Avi, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rule 15 Platts, and we're going to switch, well, we're going to go over the Item 4.1.1 is a plat vacation, and we're going to hear that one first before we go into the other ones. We'll hear from staff.
Good evening, my name is Cassie, the Planning Department. This is Bell Farms, lots 1753 through 1806, and tract V, Trax V, W, and X. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC. The purpose of this plat is to vacate a recorded plat and have it revert back to vacant unsubdivided Additional supporting documents were required for the submittal process, and that is why this plat is on tonight's agenda. And here is the plat. It was recorded in May 2021, and staff recommends approval of this plat. Staff can take any questions at this time.
Okay, any questions? All right, then we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hello, Board, I'm Greg Hernandez with the Planning Department. This is the Rule 15 plat for Lubbock Business Park, Lot 15A. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates, requesting water, sewer, and pavement delays. The plat is located south of Lubbock Business Park Boulevard and east of North Ivory Avenue in North Lubbock. Here is the plat. Here is a letter provided by the applicant requesting delays. Here is engineering's conditions as well as Lubbock utility conditions, and staff recommends approval of plat with conditions, water, sewer, and pavement delays.
Any questions?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? North Point.
Sir.
Good evening, my name is Shane Spencer, and this is the Rule 15 plat for North Point Trax GB2, GB3, and GB4. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates with a request for water, sewer, and paving delay. The subject plat property is located north of Marshall Street and west of North Slide Road. Here is the plat. Here are conditions from GIS and engineering. Staff recommends approval with conditions and water, sewer, and paving delays, and I can take any questions at this time.
Questions? Putting lots in right there?
I don't believe so, but...
This is number 2, 3, and 4 of some green belt. That's the GB designation plats that we're doing in North Point. This is where the electric transmission line goes through, and we're putting a walking trail underneath, and we have to plat those to be able to move forward with the actual construction and everything else. That's what's going on.
I was just confused because of water.
Yeah, there's just no need. We're just building walking trail, basically.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
This is Papalote Estates West, Lot 23A. The applicant is Delta Land Surveying and Engineering. This is a Rule 15 plat located north of 72nd Street and east of Saratoga Avenue in South Lubbock. The applicant is requesting approval of water, sewer, and pavement delays. Here is the plat. Here are conditions from engineering and GIS. Staff recommends approval of this plat with conditions and approval of water, sewer, and pavement delays. We can take any questions at this time.
Okay, we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve with conditions, water, paving, and sewer delays.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have Tech Gardens.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Padilla. This is for Tech Gardens, Block 11, Lots 5A and 5B. The applicant is Delta Land Surveying Engineering for a Rule 15 plat, requesting sewer, paving, and water delays. The subject property is located south of Duke Street and east of North Gary Avenue in North Lubbock. Here is the plat, and here are conditions from engineering and GIS. Staff recommends approval of plat with conditions, sewer, paving, and water delays, and I can take any questions.
Questions? Okay, we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
This is Taylor Edition, Tract A. The applicant is Delta Land Surveying and Engineering. This is a Rule 15 plat located north of 9th Street and east of Idley Road in South Lubbock. The applicant is requesting approval of water, sewer, and pavement delays. Here is the plat. Here are conditions from engineering and GIS. Staff recommends approval of this plat with conditions and approval of water, sewer, and pavement delays. We can take any questions at this time.
Questions? Okay, we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Toot and Totem, number nine.
This is Toot and Totem, number nine. The applicant is OJD Engineering LLC. This is a Rule 15 plat located north of 98th Street and east of Highway 87 in South Lubbock. The applicant is requesting approval of water delay. Here is the plat. And here are conditions from engineering. Staff recommends approval of the plat with conditions and denial of water delay. We can take any questions at this time.
Something that I might point out about that one real quick, the northern portion of that plat is technically outside of city limits. This means that the plat will need to, I guess, be reviewed by the Commissioners Court prior to being recorded.
And a fire hydrant will be required for the site, so a delay in water cannot be supported.
You're denying the water delay?
Yes.
I missed that. Okay, any questions?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second, Avi, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Last one, Toot and Totem, number 10.
This is Toot and Totem, number 10. The applicant is OJD Engineering LLC. This is a Rule 15 plat located north of 130th Street and east of Slide Road in South Lubbock. The applicant is requesting approval of sewer delays. Here is the plat. And here are conditions from engineering. Staff recommends approval of the plat with conditions and denial of sewer delay.
For the same reasons? For, on the sewer delay? Wait, did you say denial for the sewer delay, or?
We're recommending approval.
I'm sorry, we're recommending approval.
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to zone cases.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I request that we move Item 6.1?
Yeah.
Right now?
So, Item 6.1, other business requesting Nathan Jordan to waive the screen fence requirement on the property's zone Garden Office GO. Yes, what's, is every, yeah, I'm okay with moving that up. That was a short, fairly quick one. So, are you going to present or tell me that I can't do that?
I am. No, I'm going to present it if that's what y'all choose to do.
Okay, yeah, let's do that first. Get the other business out.
Don't see my slides, so let's...
Shared fence.
That's 3479. Let me jump over to the packet if that's okay.
This is the one, the shared fence between the residence and the...
Okay, so as you stated, this is the property at 107th and Indiana. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is the northwest corner of this intersection. There we go. So you can see Indiana here, 107th here. You can see the outline of where the garden office was constructed on this property at 3404. It is adjacent to a residential home to the west. Here's some photos showing that property line between the two. This is the garden office that is currently under construction, is almost completed. They are constructing the required screening fence along the north side of their property line, even though it is adjacent to a substation. It is zoned R1, so it is still required, the screening fence, but, and the applicant can explain this better. There's an easement between these two properties, and it makes better sense for them to leave it open and not have the screening fence between the two. And you do have a letter from the adjacent property owner to the west, who is in support of waiving the screening fence requirement. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay, does this have to be a public hearing?
Nope. So only if you want to hear from the applicant, you can call him up.
The only question I would have is, is the homeowner, the person who owns the residence, are they here tonight?
No, but this is his letter here that he signed.
He understands what he's signing up for, okay.
Yes.
But we do this one time, it's forever, though, right?
Yes.
In this one case.
Yeah, but I mean, if he sells it, it's, the next homeowner couldn't say, "How come there's not a fence?"
Correct.
You want to hear from the applicant? Does anybody want to hear from the applicant? Any questions for the applicant? Nope, okay.
I will say if this property, the garden office property were ever rezoned, and that was a new requirement of the new zoning district, then it would be required at that time.
If, refer, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no questions from the applicant, from the residence? Do you want to need a motion?
Motion to approve the screen fence requirement as presented at 3404 107th Street.
Motion to approve waiving.
Yeah, as presented, so waiving that fence. And we'll need a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so now we'll jump back to the top of our zone cases. Item 5.1 was withdrawn earlier this evening, so we'll get to 5.2, Zone Case 1139-C.
This is Case 1139-C. The applicant is Ashley Cruz for Keystone Properties, requesting a zone change from local retail district C2 to commercial district C4, specific use for a bar. We've sent out 17 notifications, receiving five in opposition. This property is located south of 50th Street and east of University Avenue. Here's the notification map. The ones in opposition have concerns of parking, trash, safety, and the use not conforming to what is established in the area. Here's an aerial view of the property. To the east are commercial offices, to the south is a church, a bank, to the west, and medical office to the north. The current zoning is local retail district C2. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial. Here are photos of the property and its surroundings. The future land use map designates this area for commercial uses. Although the proposed zone change is in conformance with this designation, the request for a bar would be inappropriate in this area due to its proximity to residential zoning and a church. The proposed zone change is not in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will not be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is not compatible with the surrounding area and will change the character of the existing developments. The property is located north of 52nd Street, which is designated as a local street, and east of University Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommends denial, and I can take any questions.
Ms. Padilla, if I can recollect, I think we've had this similar type presentations at least two or three times since I've been here.
Yes, we have.
There has been several times, correct?
It has, yes.
Same location?
Same location.
Same suite again and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you show me the location on the map again? Yeah, I mean, I see the building, which...
Where in the building?
Hmm, let me get...
The whole thing.
Yeah, it's actually just going for one suite.
And this is what came up before, is they, it was not the entire building they were requesting to rezone, it was just the individual suite. But...
So Suite A9B. Which one is that?
If it's, if you look at that first photo there on the left, yeah, it's in the middle area.
So it is one suite, or is the whole property? I'm sorry, I missed.
One suite.
Okay.
The caption is advertised with the one suite, but for the notifications, we still use the property line.
Wasn't there a bar there, or isn't there a bar there right now?
There's a...
Like a functioning bar or a...
Sports bar and grill.
Sports bar?
Mm-hmm.
Is it just operating out of compliance right now, or is it...
No, because it is sports bar, that is allowed in that use right there.
Sports grill.
Sports grill.
Mm-hmm.
So a sports grill is allowed, but a bar is not?
Correct.
Sports grill still has to serve food.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I serve food as well.
Okay.
Any other questions for, as of now?
No.
Okay. All right, and we will go ahead, we'll open the public hearing, and is the applicant here? I'd like to make some additional comments. Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, please state your name and address.
Just come up there?
Yes, ma'am, and speak into the...
Yes, I'm Ashley Cruz, and my address, 5015 University Avenue, Suite A9B.
Could you hear that? Could you restate that?
Yes, I'm Ashley Cruz, and my address to the building is 5015 University Avenue, Suite A9B.
Okay. So you're wanting to do what exactly?
I'm trying to do a karaoke lounge. It's like a, and it's going to have a mini-bar, but I'm only going to sell wine and beer. So, and I'm going to cater food as well. So it's like, I just want, you know, wine, beer, and karaoke. That's basically all it is. That's what I'm trying to do. And it's a small space, so it won't be like, like a big thing or anything. I want to operate from 5:00 to 2:00 in the morning, and that's it. That's basically.
5:00 PM, 2:00 AM?
That's correct.
Okay, so what's the reason for, can that not be in C2?
No, that description makes it a bar. And she is selling beer and wine. She's not selling liquor, but that still makes it a bar. And she's not, she does not have a kitchen there onsite preparing and serving the food. It sounds like you said you'll cater food, so maybe...
That's correct.
Bring food in. So a restaurant has a kitchen onsite that is preparing and serving with a full menu.
That's correct, and I'll have someone cater my food. So that's basically what I'm doing until I can expand my business further. So, I mean, I know it's, it's kind of a reach, and I know it's hard, but I do want to follow the rules and do it the right way. So that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Or staff?
So Kristen, the, the sports grill, I know that's a different zoning. It has a kitchen, and so is that, is a sports grill in a different zoning?
A sports grill is allowed in C2, same as a restaurant that serves alcohol. The definition in our code of sports grill is very long. I won't read it to you. It talks a lot about the decor and the number of TVs you have to have and things of that nature, but it comes down to, the biggest difference is a sports grill can still apply for a smoking permit and have a section of smoking where a restaurant cannot. A sports grill can also have game machines, like what Buffalo Wild Wings would have. Buffalo Wild Wings is the perfect example of a sports grill, but they do have a kitchen
So if that sports grill did not have a kitchen, it would still be allowed?
No, because then you're not serving, you're not preparing and serving food. You're just serving alcohol.
Okay.
So how much of that changes when we adopt the UDC? If we adopt UDC?
The UDC, it doesn't separate sports grill from restaurant. It's a, you are, you are an entity serving food that may also serve alcohol as an accessory use. But if your primary, the, the primary thing you serve is alcohol or beer and wine, that still makes you a bar.
So that's going to remain consistent with the, when it, when we roll up to UDC?
Yes, because it's primary versus accessory.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? I know we do, I think we have, yes, please come forward.
I had my name on the list, so...
Yeah, you can come, you can come on up, and if you don't mind, state your name and address also, and just let us know your opposition.
And Mr. Chairman, while he's coming, I'll just clarify for the audience, even if they did not sign up prior to the meeting, during the public hearing for these cases, anyone can speak.
Thanks for this forum to voice our opinion. I am Ed Ainsworth, I pastor the church due south of the property, Generations Church, and we've been at that location for seven years. And in that time of being at this location, we deal with property vandalism, squatting by homeless people, and many of our members have been approached getting into their cars and out of their cars by folks asking for money and panhandling. Litter is already a problem on our property, and with the proximity of this proposed karaoke bar, I think the litter would get, definitely get worse and cause more of a, a problem for us. But my greatest concern comes from the fact that on numerous occasions during the week, we have children between the ages of 5 and 11. They're not there during the day, they're there at night for what we call Iwanas and what we call our youth services. So those meetings happen in the evening, and I'm concerned about activities and different things that would might pose danger or concerns about that. So this is a safety concern for me and for our members, for the parents of these kids. I do understand that you cannot legislate morality, whether it's right or wrong to drink or go to a bar, and that's a choice that people make, but I do want to be concerned about my parishioners and their safety in and out of the property. Sometimes those kids, those meetings, they go outside to do activities on the property. We do have a fenced-in area that is there, and I do want to make sure that that is a safe environment, not only for our church, but for our neighborhood, the noise, the traffic that it's going to produce in the evening. There's, from time to time, we have extended meetings, like any church does, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. I think you would call them a revival or whatever you want to do, but we do that two or three times a year. And so again, this creates a concern for us. And one thing that your staff did not point out in their map that I'm going to point out is due northeast, next to the Medical Plaza, is a school, that the Richard Milburn Academy is located there. And so there is an issue, of course, they're not, if they're going to operate, as she said, from 5:00 to 2:00 in the morning, the school kids are not going to be onsite at that time, but it is there. And I know that the city ordinances for serving alcohol does have a proximity issue about being near a school. And so I just wanted to point that out, and, because it was not pointed out by your staff. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is it encroaching that, Kristen, is it within that zone of, of school?
Yes, it does not meet the separation requirement from the school, and it, the building does not meet the separation requirement from residentially zoned areas because it's a bar. They, they would have the option, if this zone change were approved, to request a variance from City Council for both of those separations.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of this zone case?
Good evening, I'm Barry Ballinger. I'm the West Texas Chairman for Plains Capital Bank. We own property just to the west of the subject property. We have 10 branches in Lubbock, one of which is located at 5015 University. This is our, our main branch at that location. It's been there since 1960. We have 150 employees that work at that location. According to, you know, the information that I was able to gather up, the subject property at 5015 University has been zoned in its current status for, gosh, I think, since 1963. And I think it's served this neighborhood well during that period of time. There's been a number of, of different businesses in and out, this shopping center that's located where we're talking about, but as has been previously pointed out, we continue to be tightly surrounded by the residences, the school, and the church, not to mention the businesses that are also in close proximity. We just believe simply this is the wrong location for this type of business. Full alcohol sales or alcohol sales, full alcohol may be an inappropriate term there, but beer and wine sales and, more particularly, the extended hours of operation, we believe, is not going to serve this neighborhood well. And I also... And, uh, I also, uh, as Mr. Bell pointed out, the last time that, that we, uh, discussed this, a similar case at the same location, uh, there was some, I think, concern about the zoning change for a particular suite in a larger, uh, shopping center complex. So I still kinda scratch my head as to how, how that would work, uh, where we're changing, changing the zoning for one particular suite and not, uh, not addressing the, uh, the whole property. Uh, for, for these reasons, I respectfully request that, uh, you carefully consider, uh, my comments as well as the comments of, of the other neighbors that are gonna speak and, uh, ask that you vote to deny the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Yes, sir.
I'm Stephen Fannin, and I own the first duplex as you go down Fifty Second on the, uh, um, south side of the street. And my tenants happen to be elderly people, elderly ladies that live there. And right now, during this time of the year, we're probably all right, but, um, they come and go. And if they're in the evening, and if you have a lot of traffic right there at Fifty Second and University, if, if you ever go over there, it's hard to get back and forth across anyway. And by putting this many more vehicles coming up, um, I was told, and I haven't been up there, but at night, right now, at nine o'clock at night, that parking lot's completely full. And I'm not sure where the overload parking's gonna go when they change what they're doing there now. So, um, we're just in opposition because of protecting our tenants as much as anything that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Okay, not seeing any. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this zone case, other than the applicant? All right, not seeing any. We will close the public hearing, and we will, just for purpose of discussion?
Motion to approve Zone Case one one three nine dash C.
Second. All right, so we have a motion.
This one's tough for me. I mean, I appreciate, um, uh, an entrepreneur that wants to start a business, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm highly in favor of that. At this location, it's just, it's really hard for me to get past the, uh, all of the opposition for, and for the reasons that they mentioned. So for me, it's just, it's, it's a tough one, and I think I'm in opposition to this one.
And just to be clear, this is in denial. This is recommendation was denial? Staff's recommendation.
Our votes are always for, in affirmative.
You can say something, Jordan.
Uh, I was just gonna say, I, it's just odd to me, not odd, but it's, it sounds like she just needs to get a kitchen. I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, but, um, and that, and I realize that a kitchen might be expensive, so I get it, but, um, just gotta go with the, with the rules how they are and how they're lined out, I think.
No, I agree with you too. I think it's kind of where you get into it. But if you did this, even though we're hearing that you're saying it's gonna be beer and wine, if we do that, nothing prevents that or somewhere else coming in. So I, I agree with what you're saying exactly.
And it rolls over at C four sticks.
It, it opens a can of worms.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, well then we, uh, have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now it was item five point two. Now we will move over to five point three, Zone Case fifteen eleven dash M.
This is Zone Case fifteen eleven dash M. Uh, the applicant is Wheelhouse Development for Booslon Inc. to rezone from C two to C three. Fourteen letters were sent out. We received four in favor and one in opposition. Property is located west of Slide and south of Fifty Second Street. Here's a notification map, so showing the four in favor and the one in opposition. The one in opposition did not state a reason. Here is a zone, uh, aerial view, showing the property surrounded by commercial, pro, uh, commercial. Here is the current zoning map, showing the property surrounded by local retail to the east, south, and west. And to the north is general retail. Future land use map shows this property's own commercial. Here is a picture, a picture of the subject's property, as well as views to the south, north, and east. The future land use map designates this area for commercial use. The proposed zone change to C three would be in conformance with the future land use plan and comprehensive plan principle. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The property is located on a principal arterial, next to commercial zoning, and would be consistent with the surrounding area. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is on Fifty First Street, which is designated as a local street, and Slide Road, which is designated as an arterial street by Master Thoroughfare Plan twenty eighteen. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
This is basically the Popeyes.
This is the old Popeyes. That's correct.
Go back to the, uh, notification.
Mm-hmm.
What is that, uh, building that is in opposition?
That is to the east, is that? I was gonna say, I believe it's the hair salon.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and is the applicant here? Like to make any additional comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Will Stevens. I'm with AMD Engineering at sixty-five fifteen sixty-eighth Street. So the purpose of this zone change, um, I'm, I'm representing Wheelhouse Development, is to, um, the, the client is, is hoping to do an oil change facility here. That's kind of the tenant that they have in mind at the moment. Um, so this zone change will allow them to do that. Uh, I did speak to the, um, the, the person that was in opposition, and it was the owner of the, the Petra Salon. And she, uh, her main concern is she wanted to make sure that it wasn't gonna be a, a smoke shop or vape shop. Um, so I just kinda assured her that C three doesn't allow that. Uh, so I'll be happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, C three does allow a smoke shop?
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Okay. Well.
But it's allowed in C two as well, so.
Don't even get into this.
Yeah. I did assure her that, yeah, Wheelhouse does, does not plan on doing that, so.
Did, uh, were you?
No, that was kinda one of those, 'cause I knew that, and just oil change, I understand it goes there, and it's okay. It's just a lot of restaurants and stuff there. It just seem different, but that's not my call.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, of course.
Any other questions for? All right. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this zone case? Not seeing any. Anyone here to speak in favor? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing.
For matter of discussion, make a motion to approve Zone Case two one two six J. Oh, excuse me, fifteen eleven. Second.
Okay, hobby's second. Okay, no more. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, Zone Case twenty-one twenty-six dash J.
This is Zone Case twenty-one twenty-six J. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Rent, for Rent Lubbock. They're requesting a zone change from General Retail District C three to Garden Office G O. The property is in District Three and is located south of Fifty Fifth Street and west of Chicago Avenue. We sent out eight notifications and have not received any in return. Here is an aerial view of the subject property. The property is adjacent to the Dominion Apartment Complex, Zoned High Density Apartment District and Family Apartment District to the east and south, Capital Farm Credit, Zoned General Retail District. And to the west and a park to the, to the north, Zoned Single Family District. The future land use map designates the subject property for residential high density. The request for Garden Office zoning is consistent with this designation and is in conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. Here are photos of the property and the surrounding area. The proposed zone change request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. It is appropriate adjacent to other commercial uses. The property is located south of Fiftieth Street, which is designated as a minor arterial, and west of Chicago Avenue, which is designated as a collector's street. Arterials are continuous routes whose function is to serve high-volume needs of local and regional traffic. Collectors are designed for medium volumes of vehicles operating at lower speeds, thirty to thirty-five miles per hour. Staff recommends approval of this request, and we can take any questions at this time.
Okay. I do have one question. Could you go back to the overhead picture? Back, back some more. There you go. You know what that is in back in the northwest corner, southwest corner? It's fenced up. It looks like it's got a bunch of stuff in it. I guess that would go, well, I'm gonna ask the applicant.
It's a stack yard that-
Looks like a light in. Excuse me?
It's a stack yard that's gonna get demolished.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. C three G O. All right, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Like to make any additional comments? Will?
Sure. Will Stevens with AMD Engineering at sixty-five fifteen sixty-eighth Street. As you mentioned, yeah, this is pretty standard, uh, downzoning to garden office. Uh, developers is obviously wanting to build, uh, six garden offices on this property. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
Any question? Okay, thank you. Is there, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Okay, anyone here to speak in favor? All right, not seeing any, then we'll close the public hearing. Pretty straightforward. We'll need a motion.
For matter of discussion, move to approve Zone Case two one two six J. Got it right this time.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wheatley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, item five point five, Zone Case thirty-four eighty.
This is Zone Case thirty-four eighty. The applicant is Travis Turner for Three T and L L B C K LLC. The request is for a zone, zone change from single-family district R one to two-family district R two. The property is in District Three and is located north of Twenty Fourth Street and east of Ithaca Avenue. We sent out twenty-two notifications and have received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Here is an aerial view of the subject property. The property is adjacent to low-density residential land uses, Zoned R one to the north, south, and west, and a beauty and health clinic, Zoned Apartment Medical District to the east. The future land use map designates this area for low-density residential land uses. The proposed zone change is not compatible with this designation. Here are photos of the subject property and the surrounding area. The proposed zone change request is in conform, is not in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate, and will not be appropriate at this proposed location. The proposed zone change is not compatible with the surrounding area and will change the character of the existing development. The proposed zone change is for low-density residential lot and is not conducive for a duplex. This property is located north of Twenty Fourth Street, which is designated as a local street, and east of Ithaca Avenue, which is designated as a collector. Local streets provide access to smaller destination-oriented areas such as neighborhoods, subdivisions, and local business districts. Collectors provide access and movement within residential, commercial, and industrial areas. Staff recommends denial of this request, and we can take any questions at this time.
Okay, any questions?
Can you go back to that aerial with the?
Yeah.
Uh, Google Earth image? Yeah. Well, maybe one more to the right, the next one, that one, so. Uh, that lot three is surrounded by all single-family lots?
Yes.
Way I see that? The east is, uh?
Apartment medical?
Parking lot?
Oh, par, yes. Um, no, actually, yes, it is.
Uh, can you go to the notification circle again? There is no responses?
No, there was not.
Okay.
In the A M., like, for instance, to the west, there's like lots two, three, four. Uh, can, is that, uh, can more than one tenant live in those houses? Can they be duplexes?
No, this is single-family residential use.
Oh, and the apartment medical?
In the green.
Are you saying on Twenty Third, lots two, three, and four that are Zoned Apartment Medical? Yes. But only because they're Zoned Apartment Medical.
Right.
And typically in this area, this is considered the medical district, Nineteenth to Twenty Fourth, Indiana to Quaker. When you get a residential lot rezoned to apartment medical, it's usually for a medical office.
But in apartment medical, they can have?
Multiple tenants.
They could turn it into an apartment, yes. Mm-hmm.
And that has, that, that is the case on some of these, I think.
It could be.
Okay.
The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, then we will, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. It, the applicant?
Yes.
Was that, yes, Mr. Lanning, Travis Lanning?
Good evening. My name is Travis Lanning. I'm one of the owners of, uh, Three T and L. This particular unit was purchased under our assumption as a duplex. It functioned as a old medical office up front with an efficiency in the back. So there are two entrances, one on the east side and one on the west side for just fully functioning, a, a fully functioning duplex. There is a alley to, directly to the south, an alley directly to the east with an adjacent parking lot. There is parking to the east for the efficiency unit, and then there is covered parking on the, uh, excuse me. Yeah, the east side has the parking lot and parking for the efficiency. And on the west side, there is a covered, uh, structure for, for vehicles. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath up front and a two-bedroom, one-bath on the east side.
So it's already like that?
It is, it's, we, we purchased this property under the impression that it was a duplex. Uh, not to drag things out, but we had a tenant on the east side of the property that we ended up having to evict. Uh, L H A got involved. They discovered that it was actually single-family. We ended up, uh, just letting the tenant out with, without any repercussions.
So you're not really changing anything?
We're not changing anything. The, all the walls were there. The bathrooms were in there. I mean, it was a, when we purchased it, it was a fully functioning duplex. It just happens to be zoned as single-family. There's plenty of parking on the east and the west sides. There's separate sewer cleanouts.
And that's an alley on the south side I'd be cutting through there?
Correct.
So you have two quarter alley, okay. Do you lease parking from the apartment medical?
No.
Or? Is that when you said parking to the east? Is it that parking lot?
So it's, there's, yes, there's, there is a, there is a parking lot, and then it's the alley, and then we have plenty of room for at least two vehicles next to the structure.
Okay.
Can you go back to the satellite image?
Is that alley on the south side, is it paved or is it dirt?
It is. It is dirt.
But people have been driving down. What about, uh, to the east there? It looks like a paved alley, right?
Correct.
So people drive down that alley there and can they turn into your east side of your comp, your duplex?
Yes.
Okay.
If a tenant was to, to drive in, they could come in off of Indiana through the parking lot, straight into, uh, the parking that would be available on the east side of the, the unit.
Okay. Any other questions? As of now? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Anyone to speak in favor? Okay. Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing.
And? For purposes of discussion, move to approve Zone Case 3480.
Second?
Second, Ms. Thompson?
Uh, I'm looking at it just based on that, the other zoning scattered throughout there. It's kind of a dot map mix mash of R1 and R2 and, and, not R2, and of AM. Uh, even up on 22nd Street, it's kind of, uh, every other one. Um, and then it, down south on 24th Street, there's some, uh, scattered throughout there. And based on there not being any opposition here either, I, I'm okay with it, um, with how it is, uh, as proposed.
I agree.
It's a weird, yeah, that neighbor, it's, the medical district's just a weird spotty thing. And if it's, if it's always, if it's been that way and they purchased it that way, they're not making any changes to it, then I'm, I don't have any issues with it either.
Just cleaning it up, making it, making it...
Cleanup. Cleanup, yeah.
Making it legal. Yeah.
Yeah, but they're, they're coming to ass and trying to make it right.
Yeah.
Um, and city staff recommended denial, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other? Uh, anything else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So that, it, you understand what just happened?
Thank you.
The, the city staff recommended denial. We, we are in favor, and so it'll go to city council for two here, two readings?
Yes. The first will be April 25th.
April 25th and the second reading?
May 9th.
May 9th.
Both at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
So, and if you have any questions, if it's confusing, just contact city staff. But it's in, it's for recommendation for approval. And I lost my place. Where were we? 5.6. Okay. We'll move on to 5.6.
Okay. This is...
And by the way, sorry to interrupt you. I understand why y'all recommended denial. I think that was the right thing to do. Just, I saw that look on your face like she was defeated or something. You're not defeated.
Not at all.
You'll get used to it. Sorry.
All right. This is Zone Case 3298D. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates Incorporated for Ford Development Corporation. They're requesting to rezone from apartment medical to local retail district C2. We've sent 20 notifications, receiving back four in favor. Subject property is located south of 141st Street and west of Indiana Avenue. Here's the notification map. Here is the aerial map to the west of homes with vacant land to the north and south and a police station to the east. Here's the zoning map. To the north and west is R1-specific use, industrial park to the south, and apartment medical to the east. Future land use map designates this property for low-density residential land uses. Here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. The future land use map designates this area for low-density residential land uses. This request is not conformed to this designation but would be appropriate next to adjacent residential and commercial districts and fits the comprehensive plan's concept of a neighborhood center along a major thoroughfare. Therefore, this request is in moderate conformance of the comprehensive plan principles. Proposed zone change is in conformance of the zoning ordinance, and the property is located next to compatible commercial and residential land uses. And the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. Location is along 141st Street and Indiana Avenue. 141st Street is designated as a local street, and Indiana Avenue is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
You didn't get any in opposition?
I did not get any opposition. Four in favor.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Thanks, Shane. All right. We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here like to make any additional comments? Always.
I never resist a chance. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates. We're at 1601 Avenue N. This is a small piece of the pie of our comprehensive zoning that we did for, uh, our Kelsey Park Development back in 2016. When we did that, uh, the area south of this tract, uh, we, we did get is, uh, what we termed IDP light back in the day, which allows all of the C2 uses. And by the way, we're asking for C2 at this corner right here. The, the piece to the south of us, um, we got zoning to allow for the C2 uses plus primarily the office warehouse that's, that's available in the IDP district with quite a few stringent architectural requirements. And so I'm going to get you oriented a little bit here if I don't get myself lost. Did I go the right way? Thanks. Yeah, this, this might tell the picture as well as anything. This, uh, this stretch of Indiana Avenue, we're almost all the way out to 146th Street. Uh, Indiana is well underway with, with construction. There's just a lot of activity out here. Over time, since we did our 2016 case, the intensities have, uh, stepped up a little bit in, in land use along this corridor. And we have a, we have a user who has a need for this location for a C2 use, and I'll get that and get that, get to that in a moment. And you would ask, and by the way, none of the other frontage has been built out yet but for the self-storage down at the, the hard corner there at 146th Street. And you would ask, well, why don't you just put it on the purple stuff that you still got vacant? Um, there are already plans on the drawing board for all of that for some smaller office warehouse buildings. You just hadn't seen a shovel hit the ground yet on that. So that land is already spoken for. So the next one available to us is this corner. Uh, it's about the right size, and we're asking for C2 zoning because we have a client who's interested in putting, uh, gymnastics, uh, like a cheer type place there that classifies as a health or athletic club. C2 zoning allows us to do that within the 3,000 square foot to 35,000 square foot. So that, that fit, that brackets our building size that we would like to do. And so for that reason, we feel like, uh, the location works. Uh, 141st Street, um, is a commercial-level street, uh, where it's next to this property. So it widens up from a residential street, and where it hits this property, it fattens up to a, a standard commercial-level street. So we feel like we've got the infrastructure in place. Um, we would just appreciate the chance to upzone this to C2. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Terry.
All right. Thanks.
Uh, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Anyone to speak in favor? Okay. Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing.
Our matters of discussion move to approve Zone Case 3298D.
Second?
Second, Mr. Patel. And? Anything? Comments? Questions? Good? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 5.7, Zone Case 1977-I.
Okay. This is Zone Case 1977-I. The applicant is 17 Services LLC for 7202 Slide Limited. The request is to rezone from apartment medical to seat and, and C2A to C2. Subject property is located north of 73rd Street and west of Slide Road. We have sent 33 notifications and not received any back in response. Here's the aerial map. There are single-family homes to the north, east, and west with a commercial building to the south. Here's the zoning map. The surrounding properties are zoned single-family district R1 and restricted local retail district C2A. And the future land use map designates this property for commercial uses. Here are photos of the subject and surrounding properties. Here's a proposed site plan showing the drive-through lanes on the, the west side right there, two of them. Here's information on traffic on 70, uh, on Slide Road from 70th to 73rd Street from January 2020 to December 2022. Here's another slide about the stretch from South Loop 289 all the way to 82nd Street. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. This request is not conformed to this designation, uh, does conform to this designation and would be appropriate next to adjacent residential and commercial districts and fits the comprehensive plan's concept of a neighborhood center along a major thoroughfare. Therefore, this request is in complete conformance of the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance of the zoning ordinance, and the property is located along a major thoroughfare incompatible next to adjacent land uses. And the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is along Slide Road, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Mr. Spencer, question for you, just kind of for clarifications. I believe this is a case that came to us before.
It did.
We, as the commission, approved it, went to city council, city council denied it.
Yeah.
And I think, from what my understanding is, there's a little change in the site plans now? Is that kind of what I'm getting to on it?
That's my understanding. I believe the number of lanes has been reduced.
Okay.
Same use though? They're requesting the exact same use?
And I believe from watching city council, I think one of the ones that they had alley where they could entrance from, which wasn't supposed to be. So just wanted to kind of clarify that, because I know everybody's... Mr. Sari was asking, haven't we seen this before? So it's kind of revised and retuned to go to...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you very much.
What's the significance of the traffic slides?
I believe previously there had been some question as to the traffic, uh, going along Slide Road. Uh, the increase in traffic, particularly, I believe, when it went to city council. And so we included those slides as well, that, that information seen as we had it.
Mr. Noble, there was a lot of questions that came up at the city council meeting after ours. I think that at that point, they had some neighborhood opposition that really came out in force for it. And I think that, if I recall right, that... I don't know. They were just worried about the traffic. There was all kinds of stuff that came up. And it was, you know, I watched, it was kind of interesting from being our part where we thought, hey, it's okay. So there was a lot of questions, getting into details and diving into it.
Okay. Any other questions? At this time? Nope? Okay. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Like to make any additional comments?
Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Tyler Gentry with 17 Services at 1500 Broadway, Suite 203. So the purpose of the, uh, application is so a bank can occupy part of the first floor. And as mentioned, this did previously go through, uh, P&amp;Z. There were some questions over a number of things. One of those was how many lanes this was. In this case, we've moved the ATM to the building, so there is clearly two lanes, one commercial, um, and one, um, public, regular drive-through. Uh, so that's been clarified. The fence opening was existing, and the applicant has no problem closing that up. They, uh, have never used it and didn't put it there. And so we, we believe that we have resolved all concerns with the opposition in this instance, and so that's why we're here again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And did you have, did you get any opposing?
I did not.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone request? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. I think you said everything that needed to be said.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any other comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Once again, city council. Just to see it. Okay. 5.8, Zone Case 2909. Dash F.
This is Zone Case 2909-F. The applicant is Kim Lee Horn for Admis Energy Corporation, requesting to rezone from IHI with specific use, or correction, IHC with specific use to IHI. Thirteen letters were sent out. We received one in favor and zero in opposition. The property is located north of 66th Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue. Here's a notification map showing the one in favor. Uh, does appear to be two responses, but it is one property. Here's the aerial view showing the property surrounded by commercial property to the north and east with vacant land to the south, and the American Legion to the west and vacant land. This is the current zoning map showing the property surrounded by interstate highway commercial to the north and east, transitional to the west, and to the south is local retail district. The future land use map designates this property for commercial use. Here's a picture of the subject's property as well as views to the north, south, and east. The future land use map designates this area for commercial uses, although the proposed zone change to IHC would not be in complete conformance with the future land use plan or comprehensive plan principle. The surrounding property is zoned IHC, and the proximity to Marshall Sharp Freeway would make this an appropriate location for IHI. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is on 66th Street, which is designated as a collector, and near Milwaukee Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial by the master thoroughfare plan 2018. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Basically, the request is just for tell, to change it to put a tell them communication?
No, they currently have the specific use for the tower. What it, what it is, is they are, they have outside storage, which is not allowed in their current zoning. So they're bringing their, yeah, let me bring it to there.
I'm bringing it in.
They're bringing it into compliance, correct? They do already have that specific use for the tower. We did get some confusion on that, uh, had a couple of phone calls regarding that. Uh, made it clear to them that they're not changing anything other than just bringing their property into compliance.
Okay.
The IHI...
And it's screened, it's walled. I, when I remember.
Yes, it is.
When I remember, it's very professional.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, the current zoning just doesn't allow for the outside storage, so they're just bringing the property into compliance by rezoning it to the IHI.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here like to make any additional comments? Yes, sir.
How's it going? Kyle Brockman, Kim Lee Horn, 4411 98th Street, uh, Suite 300. Uh, no additional comments, just nothing's changing with the property, just trying to bring it into a zoning classification that conforms.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thanks. Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Or in favor of this zone case? All right. Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. Everybody understand what we're doing?
Motion to approve Zone Case 2909-F.
Second?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 5.9. Case 2985-D.
This is Case 2985D. The applicant is Park Hill for Panhandle Land Investments. Requesting a zone change from high-density apartment district A2 to general retail district C3. We've sent out six notifications, receiving zero back. This property is located east of Frankfurt Avenue and north of 114th Street. Here's an aerial view of the property. To the east is vacant land and residential homes. To the south are offices and vacant land. To the west is vacant land, and to the north are residential homes. The current zoning is high-density apartment A2. The current zoning is high-density apartment A2. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial. Here are photos of the property and its surroundings. Here's a graphic provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land use. The proposed zone change to C3 would be in conformance with the principles of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This request would be appropriate next to the existing C3 zoning to the west. The proposed zoning request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and is appropriate for this area. The proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing developments. The proposed rezoning location will be along 114th Street. 114th Street is designated as a minor arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request and I can take any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Is this a cleanup?
Okay.
Is this a cleanup case?
He... I believe they're just... Yes, they're just taking that little piece. To make it C3.
I believe it's so they can have three one-acre sites.
Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Like to make any additional comments? Yes, sir.
Tarek Redwan with Park Hill, 4222 85th Street. Like Kristen said, it's just a little bit cleanup to have three one-acre lots. So the west is already C3 and we're just taking that little slice to have those three one-acre lots available for sale, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Anyone here to speak in favor? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing.
Matter discussion, motion to approve Zone Case 2985-D.
Second. Second, Mr. Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five ten. Thirty-four eighty-one.
This is Zone Case 3481. The applicant is Delta Land Surveying for TKRB Investments. Her request is for a zone change from Transition District to General Retail District. This property is in District 5 and is generally located west of Milwaukee Avenue and south of 110th Street. We sent out twenty-eight notifications and have received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Here is an aerial view of the property. The property is adjacent to residential homes currently under construction. Zoned Single Family District, specific use for garden homes to the north with vacant land, zoned local retail district to the east and north, and vacant land zoned transitional to the south and west. The future land use map designates the subject property for low-density residential uses. The requested zone change is appropriate in this location. Here are photos of the subject property and the surrounding area. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the location is appropriate for C3. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. It is appropriate adjacent to commercial uses. The property is located west of Milwaukee Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial and south of 110th Street, which is designated as a local street. Arterials are continuous routes whose function is to serve high-volume needs of local and regional traffic. Local traff... local streets typically provide access to smaller destination-oriented areas. Staff recommends approval of this request and we can take any questions at this time.
Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, we'll open the public hearing. And is the applicant here? Like to make any additional comments? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Robert Kennedy, Delta Land Surveying, 1310 Jarvis Street. To my understanding, that they're wanting to do some, uh, some, uh, strip shopping along Milwaukee, movie theater on the north portion of the property and, um, I believe self-storage on the south and southwest portion.
Yeah, well, if they go to pull the permit, it'll...
Self-storage would have to get a specific use, correct?
That's correct. It's not allowed by right in C3.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. And...
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And five point eleven, Mr. Wheatley will recuse. We still have a quorum. Zone Case 2538-GG.
This is Zone Case 2538-GG. The applicant is AMD Engineering for 806 Land Group. Her request is for a zone change from General Retail District to Local Retail District. Specific use for self-storage. This property is in District 6 and is located east of Upland Avenue and south of Fourth Street. We sent out five notifications and have received two letters in favor and zero in opposition. Here is a melon notification map. And here is an aerial view of the subject property. The property is surrounded by residential uses. Zoned Single Family District to the north, east, and south, and Two Family District and General Retail District to the west. The future land use map designates the subject property for residential low-density uses. The requested zone change is not in conformance with this designation, but the requested zone change is more restricted... is a more restrictive district than the existing C3 zoning and it is appropriate in this location along a thoroughfare and adjacent to other existing commercial zoning to the west. Here are photos of the subject property and the surrounding area. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the location is appropriate for C2's specific use for self-storage. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. It is appropriately adjacent to commercial uses. The property is located east of Upland Avenue and south of Fourth Street, which are both designated as principal arterials. Arterials are continuous routes whose function is to serve high-volumes needs of local traffic and regional traffic. Staff recommends approval of this request and we can take any questions at this time.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, then we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here again?
Last time. My name is Will Stevens with AMD Engineering, 6515 68th Street. I'm gonna go back a few images here. So late last year, we came for you and zoned approximately fifteen acres at the southeast corner of Upland and Fourth Street for C3. And so we have now have a tenant that's looking to do a self-storage facility. Thus, the request to do so before you today, so... Kristen, is the site plan in this presentation? Do you know? I don't... I printed one out and I'll kind of pass it around just to kind of give a little more information. So what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna have... we're gonna be taking about five acres for this zone change. We're gonna leave about an acre and a half on the west side. And we're gonna have a shared drive. The main entry to the self-storage facility will be a shared commercial drive between the storage facility and the commercial to the west. And then on the east side, along Rochester, we'll have an emergency exit only that'll be gated. So it'll be for exit only. So our main entrance will be on Fourth Street and we'll have the required screening along the southeast and west, and so I'll be happy to answer any other questions if you have.
Those are... that's just structure. It's not a... it's one... it's a...
There's two. Correct, right. So there're gonna be two climate-controlled buildings, right?
Is it seventy-three? No, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is. It's a big building.
Right, yeah, it's totaled in about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, so. We wanted to focus on keeping the main entry, you know, on Fourth Street, not on the residential street, so.
Okay. Put it that real quick. Any questions? People mention self-storage facility. You typically don't visualize that.
It's more enclosed.
Right, yeah, it'll be climate-controlled indoor.
Contained.
Yeah.
Any questions? The applicant? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course, sure.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Okay. I will close the public hearing.
For matter discussion, motion to approve Zone Case 2538-GG.
Second.
Second, Mr. Noble. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next item, five point twelve. Twenty-five thirty-eight dash HH.
This is Case 2538-HH. The applicant is Beaton Bow Homes. The purpose is to rezone from R1 to R2. The property is located south of 25th Street and east of Endler Avenue. Nine letters were sent out and we received one back in favor. Here's the notification map showing the one in favor. Here's the aerial view showing the property surrounded by vacant land. The current zoning map shows the property surrounded by single-family use. The future land use map designates this property for residential low-density uses. Here's a picture of the subject property as well as views to the north, south, and west. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density. The proposed zone change to R2 would not be in complete conformance with the future land use plan or comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The zone change to R2 is an appropriate use near R1 zoning. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is near Endler Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial and 25th Street, which is designated as a collector street by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff recommends approval of this request and I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Like to make any additional comments? Please do.
Good evening. My name is Wes Everd with Beaton Bow Homes. And we... this is going to be one of our new... newer... our newer developments, Cypress Ranch. It's a mix of our core and cottage product, hence why we were wanting to go in from R1 to R2. And I will kind of show you... here was the preliminary plat. The gray area is more of our core product. And coming off of 179, you'll see one of our main entrances. The blue area is going to be more of our cottage product. And then the kind of tan area are actually some larger drainage basins we're having to put in to handle the water flow through the area. But I'm here for any questions or comments y'all have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everd. Any questions? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Susan? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And last case, five point thirteen, Zone Case 3479.
Last people left in the building.
This is Case 3479. The applicant is Seventeen Services LLC for Bolton Oil Company LTD. Requesting a zone change from Transition District T to Commercial District C4. We've sent out ten notifications, receiving zero back. This property is located west of North Frank... of North Frankfurt Avenue and north of Ursine Street. Here's an aerial view of the property. To the east and west is vacant land. To the north and south are commercial businesses. The current zoning is transitional. The future land use plan designates this property for residential low-density. Here are some photos of the property and its surroundings. The site plan provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density land use. Although the proposed zone change to C4 would not be in conformance with this designation, it is in conformance with the principles of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and it would be appropriate next to the existing commercial businesses that surround it. The proposed zoning request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and is appropriate for this area. The proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing developments. The proposed rezoning location will be along North Frankfurt Avenue. North Frankfurt Avenue is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request and I can take any questions.
Questions for Ashley?
Ashley, why C4?
They are wanting to do office warehouse.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll open the public hearings. Is the applicant here? Like to make any additional comments? Yes, sir.
Tyler Gentry with Seventeen Services, 1500 Broadway, Suite 203. Just here to answer any questions if you have them.
Good deal, all right. There, go ahead.
James, I just asked the question, can you kind of walk through the site plan for us and just kind of explain what you're doing?
Yes, sir. Let's see if I can find it. So there are some existing buildings. The primary focus of this is office warehouse-type buildings. With the intention of potentially focusing in the automotive industry, you know, maybe it's window tinting or, you know, bodywork, I'm not sure specifically, but that's the goal. I know this is a little fuzzy. Apologize. But it's a number of single-user type office warehouse buildings and then along with the existing three buildings in the middle, retrofitting those to work alongside that use.
How many... how many units are you looking at, trying to have?
I apologize, but I can't read this page. It's too hard to say.
Twenty or so?
Approximately, yes.
That's North Frankfurt and...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Anyone here to speak in favor? Okay, yes, sir.
Any questions if you have any?
Think we're good for now.
All right. Unless you got something you need to add. No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any others. Is... we'll close the public hearing.
Matter discussion of motion to approve Zone Case 3479.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And we've already discussed other business. Anything else? Ladies and gentlemen of the staff, we are adjourned.